What that is.
Thank you all for having us this evening. Corey Sosby, on behalf of the Williams-Kaywood, we've worked with Josh to submit an application for the Safe Streets For All Grant, Planning Grant, which is put out by the Department of Transportation over the past couple of years. This past year, they released about 400 million, the latest offerings for this year to apply for planning grants. And so essentially what that does is, the Safe Streets For All Program is a data-driven approach to reducing fatalities and traffic injuries and serious injuries in the city. So basically come in and do an extensive data analysis among, as well as community engagement, to work up a profile of hazardous streets and intersections around the city. And the goal is to produce an action plan that you then kind of submit, publicize, give back to them, and it allows you to apply for implementation funding. But before you can get any money to actually do the work per this grant opportunity, you have to do the safety action plan first. And so that's kind of the first step in terms of securing the implementation funding later on.
And therefore, how much is the money? It costs to do the study?
You kind of set that based on the size of the city and the needs. So like with, one of the draws for Jacksonville would be having the university here. That would be appealing, as well as underserved populations in the community. So that's one thing that they look at in terms of how they award these grants. But I think we were looking at around 175 or 200 for this planning grant to do.
Dollars or pounds?
Thousand, two hundred thousand.
And that is eighty, twenty?
That is eighty, twenty, yes, sir.
But also I felt that twenty could be income services on our side?
Correct. Yes, yes, we.
You're over five hundred and twenty.
Right.
That's five hundred and twenty, right?
Right.
An SS4A window not closing?
It is. Thursday, 5:00 P.M.
But the action plan has to be completed instead of by Thursday?
Just the application.
Oh, is it taking big application?
Well, not very long. They're, yeah, they're reasonably easy to put together.
Mind if I say they're already working on it?
Yes. Yeah, then usually the funding will be released at the beginning of the year or towards the end of this year, so you can start the action plan for a quarter next year. And then usually, they have an open window, but it's typically ten to twelve months.
With your own unit, not really? Whether we want to move forward with this or not?
Right, in order to, yeah, this resolution was to support the application submission on Thursday.
So we're according to Senate 175, that one? And then we feel rushing.
Yeah, and it's basically, I mean, the application is really straightforward. There's a short period that you have to put together to give them a little information on Jacksonville and the need. But other than that, it's standard information that you have to submit.
I'm personally, I ask, but that's my opinion. Let's keep them thinking there's so much in it that we need for safety and stuff later. Unless we're closing it to finish it out. Once they, if they're closing the window, what's going to be the probability that it will be continued? Is it, nowhere, up north, going out now or in DC or anything? Is it a chance that money may be pulled and we spend?
It's already been allocated, so.
So it's in the.
For this year. But this is, this is a program that they did decide to continue on. They've made some changes to it, but nothing major.
I guess I'm kind of bummed over with the point. I'd like to know what we're looking at, what we're going to do. So that's my, well, I still would know, I think Terry's already put you on the spot, so I'll continue.
Sorry, didn't open. The current work that is being looked at about the square improvements, the two oh four improvements, improvements on Tellom North, is there any other, and you're being major intersections or hazardous? I know every intersection can be hazardous, but is there, do you feel like there's a need for this? Or is it better to wait and see how all this other pans out?
And so the work that's being done on the square north was done as a result of a study done by Skipper, Skipper Consulting. And that was just done, Aldoc took care of that. In talking to Keith Strickland about this grant, we can all look with our eyes and I can say, we have a bunch of wrecks there. We need to do something about that intersection. But I think when you start talking to Aldoc, they're about data. And so they want to see the data that backs up what your suspicion is. And so I think that will help us identify some of those problem areas that we already may think are problem areas, but also give us the data to back us what we already know. And then I think that what helps us if we get the applying for other tap branch, and that information's already there to support applying for the grants.
We already have our own data. Do we need to develop sort of the right part?
We have the data, but they break it down a little bit better in terms of time of day. Even when we were dealing with Skipper and doing the plan for around the university for the square north, American City, they broke it down. They came out and they were breaking it down by class schedule, how many cars were traveling between the rush period of 7:00 A.M. and 10:00 A.M., what it looked like at lunchtime, what it looked like after lunchtime, what did the traffic look like after 5:00 P.M.? So they were taking all of that data and breaking it down. So I mean, they even, kind of a funny thing, the mayor got seen by Skipper on the square eating ice cream. That's kind of how we got part of the square back into that project. But they were even, you know, as far as crosswalks, they were seeing where we needed crosswalks at, what was the viable needs of crosswalk at certain intersections. So while we do have the data, they take it down, another expert from breaking that data down to make it, make it plain to where people can understand it.
So you're saying too, that not only this data will work for what here, but in the future, we can use the data more to get more grants?
Correct, yes, sir.
Well, we're going to have to play the studies somewhere down the road each year. Why not do it now? And then we've got it for future reference.
And this grant here is just for the study to collect the data. There'll be another grant application for the implementation of what we find out.
Right, this one, this one takes the data like he was mentioning, and you break it down by travel mode, car, pedestrian, cyclists, whatever it is, and then you formulate a high injury network for the city. And those are your hotspots around the city. And so from there, even as a part of this, you can do demonstration activities, such as like temporary improvements, community engagement, or you can then highlight specific projects out of this area as well. So we could look at specific high network roads or intersections, include those in the plan, and say, these are the ones that we want to apply for planning for. And then they're already teed up for, could be tap or feature SS4A implementation as well.
We negotiate the 175,000?
That's not, that'll be part of the, that'll be part of the application. We don't have to say it tonight, but we can talk about it.
I think my only presentation is being rushed. Do we miss anything? And you're saying all it is is just the application? So if there's nothing that is.
I hope I'm speaking on a term, not necessarily rushing it. We've been having this conversation about it probably over a week. We just needed to get to this point to know, make sure the work wasn't been done in vain and whether to continue to submit the final.
So yeah, there's already been other things placed. I think that's my, that's my only concern is that you rush to do something. There's a T or an I or something that does not happen that needs to be there or was to give a deal.
Yeah, I mean, I'll say, from the city's side, there are some, there is, there's some things that they do want from the city's side in terms of like accountability and transparency, forming task force for certain traffic, you know, implementations, whatever that may be. And so, so there is, there is some expectation there that the city is committing to by 2030, zero traffic fatalities and serious injuries on their road network. So there is some buy-in on the city's part. There's not a lot of upfront information that you have to present. It's just more, more so the will of the city to reduce traffic injuries and fatalities is, is the main goal of this. Some of them are called Vision Zero plans. We've been, we've recently been working on one with Talladega. And so, yeah, there's, there is that. And there is a commitment, there are several commitments that you have to commit to in terms of having a public presence, transparency, accountability with the public and different, different aspects like that.
But the data drive that, based on the data, you drive that, that like conversation towards manpower and how we.
Right. And, and I mean, one of the big parts of it is it makes it, it makes this stuff a little bit more public in terms of traffic safety and problems around town.
What's the percentage of, of attainment if a city, let's say Talladega, they spent the money and whatever, and all this is identified? What is the percentage of completion that has really made a difference as far as the safety is, the streets are wrecked or something like that? Is there a percentage that y'all would, either would be able to tie to that it's worth 175,000 dollars?
Well, one of the goals of the action plan is monitoring. And so it's, it's validating the study essentially over the course of the following five years as you're trying to reduce, reduce the fatalities and injuries. So I don't, I don't have a percentage. But again, this plant, this, this actual, this actual grant is relatively new. And so there are some cities that are just now doing some of the implementation on these projects, but it's only been around for a few years.
Some agenda?
We're going to board with it?
Thanks, sir.
All right, next item on the session is Zero Eyes. Chief Wood?
Or even?
So a couple of months ago, I came to you guys about an eight-decker grant that we had been awarded. And part of that grant award was a contract or a potential contract with a company called Zero Eyes. And what, I think you have a contract before you, and I'll just kind of give a quick overview of what we talked about before. So it's a project that partnered with the school system on providing some AI technology to the camera infrastructure that helps us identify dangerous weapons, guns, rifles, knives, those kind of things. If people are approaching campus or on campus with some type of weapon, and it notifies a tree of people that we put in, we put in that queue to be, for people to be notified. And so the reason I'm before you tonight is we were able to obtain the first two years in funding through that grant. So there's a third year that, that we'd have to pay for. I had the pleasure of being able to go to the Board of Education meeting last week, and their board committed to doing their part to help support that third year. And so it's coming before the council tonight to see what you guys would be willing to do on paying for that third year. We're in the process now also applying for a school violence prevention grant. And so that has the potential, if we're awarded, to take care of that third year and potentially add the fourth and fifth year.
How much money would help that?
That third year is 33,120. I'm not sure the exact amount that the school board committed to, but.
I was able to sit in on the presentation when the jury came in. It's pretty extraordinary what it can do, what it can pick up. Can you explain that better than I can? But it was just, basically, any kind of weapon, long weapon, short weapon, you pick up on knives?
Okay, so they were, they're trying to get the system, they're building that part of the system out.
So many feet away, I think you can, I can get the footage that they could pick up on. Basically, if anyone hit that campus and had anything, had exposed weapons, you can pick up on it, and then send it, that information to responsible parties. I mean, it's just one of those things that they help keep our schools safer.
And so what we would, what we're asking for tonight is initially to approve a three-year contract with the option to renew a fourth and fifth year if we receive the funding in that fourth and fifth year.
Thanks, Chief. You might as well stick with it. Video camera, but never on understanding.
So what you also have before you in this one is MOU with the Police Department and the EMAC Center. And so what they're able, what they are being able to do is they've received some funding to be able to give cameras or put up cameras, video cameras to their partner agencies. And we're one of those. And so this MOU allows them to put those up and creates an agreement between us and them on the responsibility of those. They'll put them up, they'll maintain the maintenance. The only thing that we'll have to provide is a, a data card for internet to allow access, remote access to. And so they'll come and put them up, you know, we'll share them and monitor them, and all of the things that go along with it. And this will just fill out what each other's responsibility is.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief Parker for sharing.
Next item is the Rick Bragg Historical Marker. Do you want to speak on that?
Do you want to speak on that? If you don't mind, just come. And then I'll see if we can, our devil's here, we discuss.
Thank you so much. So just as an update on the Rick Bragg Historical Marker, I've been working with Mr. Bragg to finalize the language on it. As he said, right, a lot of things get said about him that aren't true, right? So like the initial draft, right, we had to go back through and rewrite it. Where it is right now is we haven't edited down to the appropriate character spaces, so that would actually fit on a marker. One of the things that came up is we've discussed where placing it, right? So initially, there was talk about city square, right? Then the conversation moved to other locations. And one of the places that came up was the community center. I do think the community center could have some more historical programming around it. However, Mr. Bragg did ask that it not be placed there. His late brother worked for Parks and Rec, and he thought that had overshadowed his memory, right, of having his marker there. And so I think we should respect that. I think we definitely should take that into consideration. So where I've been working with Gail, Mr. Bragg, and a few other people is possibly the library. I do think the library would make the most sense since he's a writer and his accomplishments are in letters. But that is definitely open for discussion, right? I do, like I said, think we need to take into account, though, is, his actual wishes of not putting it in a specific place, right, for family reasons, so.
The mayor and I walked around the library one day last week, and there's, there's still some grinch face on both sides of the building. I don't think it'd be a recognition for that.
I agree, yes. So either right by the parking lot, or even if like out, like if you wanted it by the sidewalk, right, so as people would drive by, right? I mean, there's lots of different locations in and around the library I think that would, that would work well.
I think the garbage is in the packet. For every year on the actual sign.
I appreciate you working on this. I think there'd be a great addition around the library. Mr. Bragg, well-known in this area. So I appreciate everything that's done for this area.
Any other comments?
I appreciate the chance to correct that.
Thank you. All right, item I is, any of the business? Hear none, say none. Anyone in break? Move on. Let's move on to the actual council meeting section of this. Move on to item seven, the adoption of the minutes. Motion to have a second here? Motion second, any discussion? Hear none, roll call please.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. M. Green? And Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Item eight, the adoption of the agenda, do we have some changes?
We do. To the main agenda to lead item 10, schedule public hearing regarding a proposed economic development project within the city limits of Jacksonville, Alabama, for July 14, 2025, at 6:00 P.M.
Is that the only change?
Now, we have, we have those additions.
No, I mean, on this one. There's another one.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry. That's one of the.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Okay. To the main agenda also, add item 21A, consider action to approve the promotion of the following. A is Jordan Michael Latham, police sergeant, range 22, effective June 25, 2025, due to the resignation of Clint Irvin. Item B is Dalton Thomas Fitch, police corporal, range 20, effective June 25, 2025, due to the promotion of Jordan Michael Latham. And item C is Clifton Dontell Edwards, police corporal, range 20, effective June 25, 2025, due to the resignation of Mitchell Jones. That's the only two.
Do I have a motion to stop the agenda as amended? Motion second, any discussion? Hear none? Roll call please.
Mr. A. Green?
Yes.
And Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. M. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Item nine, is public comments concerning any agenda item this year opportunity to address the council immediately to start the agenda. Seeing no one come forward, we'll move on to item eleven.
Public hearing regarding the closing of FY 2022 Community Development Block Grant, project number LR CM PF 22-003 Sewer Rehabilitation.
All right, public hearing is now open. If you would like to discuss anything, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and make, make sure you get the city clerk to develop the report.
Hi, I am Jillian Farmer, and I'm with the East Alabama Commission. We were the ones that were administering this grant. So before we fully open up and public comment, I'm just going to go over a few things that happened with this grant, sort of requirements that I have to discuss before we close this out. So we are in closeout, like I mentioned. Project was successful. Just some background, in 2022, Jacksonville received funding from the Department of Economic and Community Affairs for their Community Development Block Grant Program. The city received about $500,000 to conduct the sanitary sewer improvement project. Five streets were selected. Those five streets included Church Avenue Southeast, Tarver Street Southeast, Green Avenue Southeast, Hatcher Avenue Southeast, and Hollingsworth Street Southeast. There was about 149 beneficiaries that resided within the project area. Construction on the project was completed in about August of 2024, but due to an unforeseen circumstance, there was an increase in project cost, which required a formal amendment. That's why, even though construction ended in August, we're only just now to close out. So that amendment was approved just a couple of months ago. After the final change order and everything was said and done, the total project cost came to about $785,000, $785,615.49. As I mentioned, 500,000 of that was from the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs. And then there was $285,615.49 in matching city funds. Overall, CDBG project has to benefit around 51% low to moderate income individuals. This specific project benefited nearly 75%. And the whole reason this project happened was because there were sanitary sewer overflows. There was issues with inflow and infiltration within the pipes, and there was also a collapsed sewer line on Church Street. All of those things have been resolved. And that's my spill, so if there's any public comment about that.
Does anyone else have to discuss that matter? I say no one come forward. We'll close the public hearing. Move on to item 12.
Public hearing regarding lien on 307 Alexandria Road Southwest, Jacksonville, Alabama, due to city ordering demolition of unsafe structure.
Now, open up the hearing. Anyone like to discuss that, please come to the podium, state your name and address. Seeing no one come forward, we'll close the up hearing. Move on to item 14.
Consideration of Resolution R-2252-25, ascertaining, fixing, and determining the amount of assessment to be charged as a lien on the property known as 307 Alexandria Road Southwest, Jacksonville, Alabama, 36265, parcel ID number 12-06-14-2-002-019.00 in the city of Jacksonville, Alabama, as a result of the city ordering the demolition of the structure on the property pursuant to ordinance number 0-598-17 and 11-53B-1, et cetera, of the code of Alabama 1975.
Thank you, ma'am. You have a motion? I still have a second. Second. Motion second, any discussion? Hear none, roll call please.
Mr. A. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. M. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Item 14.
Consideration of Resolution Number R-2251-25, appointing and affirming statutory absentee election manager for the 2025 general municipal and board of education election.
Motion second, any discussion?
I will brag on Brenda just a moment. She's, is doing an excellent job with her day-to-day operations, but any of those who are running for office and yet already came in and picked up their packet, you know, that's, that's above and beyond. Not everyone gets a nice big green binder plus a thumb drive plus hands-on information as you sit across from yourself. Those who are running, just make sure you tell her thank you. Because those went above and beyond. Thank you.
The mayor.
Mayor didn't get a packet.
Good job, good job you did. Leave dance? Hear none? Roll call please.
Mr. A. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. M. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes, I'm good, thank you.
Consideration of Resolution Number R-2253-25, supporting the application for the Safe Screen and Roads For All SS4A Grant Program and the adoption of a goal to work towards zero traffic-related deaths and serious injuries.
You have a motion? Motion second, any discussion? Hear none? Roll call please.
Mr. A. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. M. Green?
Yes.
And Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Consider action to accept the bid report for bid number 25-09, JPWP number 24-126, Public Safety Complex Pond Pavilion, and approve Resolution Number R-2254-25, rejecting all bids received per the attached.
Motion second, any discussion? No, no discussion. Hear none, roll call please.
Mr. A. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. M. Green?
Yes.
Item seventeen.
Consider action to rescind the liquor-drinking places business license. Consider action to rescind the liquor-drinking places' business license for Heirloom Group, Incorporated, located at 111 La Diga Street Southeast, Jacksonville, due to notification of the closure of the restaurant, effective immediately per the attached.
So, I will motion to have a second. Motion to second, any discussion? Hear you none, roll call please.
Mr. A. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. M. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes. Item 18.
Consider action to rescind the retail beer off premises and retail wine off premises' business license of Bahier Mahflihi LLC, located at 1050 Pelham Road South, Jacksonville, due to the business vacating the premises and removing all product without notification, effective immediately per the attached.
Motion to second, any discussion? Hear none, roll call please.
Mr. A. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. M. Green.
Yes.
And Mr. Taylor.
Yes. Item 19.
Consider action to authorize to mayor to sign the video camera equipment memorandum of understanding with the Oxford Police Department per the attached.
Motion to second, any discussion? Hear you none, roll call please.
Mr. A. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. M. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes. Item 20.
Consider action to authorize the mayor to sign the subscription agreement with Zero Eyes per the attached.
Motion to second, any discussion?
Appreciate the school system working with the police department. I know we're against our own, but are just another demonstrated agreement of putting children's safety, the safety of those who are vulnerable and at the forefront and grateful that we have a school system in our city that is mindful and not everyone is, has the best interest for kids.
Well, and thank the council, and Chief would thank you so much, and the partnership is just, it's an example, I appreciate it, so, thank you so much.
All that goes down, I think I've shared with you this working relationship with council and school board is better than it has been in my nine years here. So appreciate everything you do and the true partnership we have, trying to do the right thing for the kids and stuff like that.
Anything else? Not hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. A. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. M. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes. Item 21.
Consider action to approve the employment of the following. A is Dylan Collins, laborer of a part, range one, effective upon compliance with ordinance number 273, due to the resignation of Dylan Smith. And item B is Joseph Cole Painter, police officer, range 18, effective upon compliance with ordinance number 273, due to the resignation of Coney Canas.
Motion to second, any discussion? Chief, or, say in audience?
Yes, or Mr. Taylor.
You just, set up and, and, thank you very much. Thank you for coming to your ask.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
Leave dance? Hear you none, roll call please.
Mr. A. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. M. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes. Item 21A.
Consider action to approve the promotion of the following. A is Jordan Michael Latham, police sergeant, range 22, effective June 25, 2025, due to the resignation of Clint Irvin. Item B is Dalton Thomas Fitch, police corporal, range 20, effective June 25, 2025, due to the promotion of Jordan Michael Latham. Item C is Clifton Dontel Edwards, police corporal, range 20, effective June 25, 2025, due to the resignation of Mitchell Jones.
Sir. Motion to second, any discussion? Chief of the mayor? No, it's all. Thank you, thank you for all your hard work.
Your work.
So, nothing else? Leave dance? Uh, hear you none, roll call please.
Mr. A. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. M. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes. Item 22.
Consider action to approve the reclassification of the following. A is Austin Shanefield, firefighter paramedic, range 11A, effective May 28, 2025, due to obtaining paramedic license. Item B is Scarlett McLeod, firefighter paramedic, range 11A, effective June 25, 2025, due to obtaining paramedic license.
Got a motion, uh, second. Motion to second, any discussion? Chief, is your buck stiff enough? Well, thank them anyway.
I would like to say that's a year-long commitment to both of those employees, you know, types of commitment that they do, and give that license, and we're very proud of them. Thanks, sir. Thanks, good friend.
Anything else? Leave dance? Roll call, hear you none, roll call please.
Mr. A. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. M. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes. Item 23.
Consider action to accept the resignation of the following. A is Jesse McKnight, part-time utility equipment operator, effective June 10, 2025. Item B is Carrie Parker, part-time firefighter paramedic, effective immediately. And C is Joshua A. Kitchens, part-time firefighter EMT, effective immediately.
Motion to second, any discussion? Hear you none, roll call please.
Mr. A. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. M. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes. Item 24.
Consider action to approve the termination of the following. A is Jessica Slaughter, senior center laborer, effective immediately. The slaughter was still under probation.
Got a motion? No, second. Motion to second, any discussion? Hear you none, roll call please.
Mr. A. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. M. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Item 25, budget amendments. Item 26, purchases over $7,500. Item 27, request to attend conference training sessions for costs exceeding $1,000. Item 28, disposition of surplus property.
Got a motion? So move, got a second. Motion to second, any discussion? Hear you none, roll call please.
Mr. A. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. M. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Item 29, if public comments concerning any general items this year are duty to the council, or anything that was on the agenda, please come to the podium, state your name and address, make sure you get where the city clerk, where you live.
My name's Steve Seawalk. I own a lot at 1700 Seventh Avenue Northeast. Got a problem with the construction at 1701 Seventh Avenue Northeast, using my lot and city right-of-way for, uh, storage and, um... There's a staging area for the construction that's going on there. I've got a picture, if any of you would like to see it. Who do I give that to up there?
Yes, sir. Can you leave that with us? Do you want to take that back?
No, you can, you can.
You just, left it over there, or any, chief, chief will. Thank you.
You can tell by the picture, a lot of side rolls with the rain we've had. Every time they come in to get one of them side rolls, they gotta bring a skid steer or a mini excavator to pick it up. Leaves ruts on city right-of-way and my property. And I called the police, had to file a report. Of course, they say it's not a criminal issue, it should be dealt with civilly. I shouldn't have to go to court to get somebody to repair the damage they've done to my lot, and the city should also not be required to repair it at their expense. It should be dealt with by, and paid for by the, uh, property owner and contractor that hired these subs out. I, I don't know what to do. I, it seems to me it'd be very simple to withhold the certificate of occupancy for the property until repairs and damages are completed satisfactorily. That's what I got to say about that.
When was this picture taken?
That was, uh, last Friday, no, two, well, a week and a half ago.
My wife had me riding her around Jacksonville, and we rode up by there yesterday and, no, you know, all that had been removed. I didn't...
The sods removed, but what they did then was put their bucket and some other machinery in its place. And you can tell that it's rotted up. I shouldn't have to pay for that. I shouldn't have to go to court to get them to pay for it. I think that the city should enforce, you damage it, you fix it. And it's been a week and a half and there's been nothing done to repair it, fix it. The other item I got is, because I've already paid for a sewer and water tap, the stand pipes that mark where the connections will eventually be have been knocked down and destroyed. Getting the water department out there to repair those and put new stand pipes in, it's not that easy, doesn't want to get done. So that's what I got complaint about today.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else want to...
Good evening. Um, my name is Yana Sky. Uh, I'm a student at Jacksonville State University. I'm actually the SJA president at Jacksonville State University, and today, me and one of my partners, Hannah Grace Sylvie, we have come to, um, maybe not an action item, but address you guys with a proposal, um, for this upcoming election. We are wanting to extend, um, some of our buildings for maybe a, and some kind of debate or, you know, showing of the electors for this upcoming, um, election season. Anytime you guys would like to utilize our facilities, we'd like to make, you know, a camaraderie between the state, the city, and the university. So we're wanting to propose, you know, any date when we can, you know, come together and really show Jacksonville who's going to be running, as well as our stimulus, because they do, some do live here, um, on the avenues, we're all around, around the city, so love to, you know, partner with that, so, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am, can you help?
Yes.
Anyone else want to address the council?
Hi, my name is Carla Eden. I reside at 805 Holly Avenue Northeast. Good evening, council members and mayor. As I said, my name is Carla, and I just wanted to take a moment to introduce myself. I was born right here in Jacksonville, and although I grew up in Anniston, I always tell people that my daddy raised me here. If we weren't on a Jacksonville High School or a Jacksonville State University football field, then we were somewhere else in the community here. The city has always held a special place in my heart. Then in 2020, my husband and I made the decision to move our family here, and it's been one of the best decisions that we have made. We've been so pleased with the sense of community and the clear dedication that this city shows its residents. I worked for the city of Anniston myself, so I understand that public service is often a thankless job, and that's why I wanted to take the time today to say something that I should have said a long time ago. Thank you and well done. Your staff has truly impressed us, and I want to specifically recognize Ms. Lee Fortenberry. She went above and beyond to help my husband with his, uh, business license, from never missing a call to following, following up before I even had to, to making the entire process feel seamless and cared for. And when I casually mentioned that our trash can had a broken wheel, I don't think she even told me who to call, she quietly took care of it herself, and next thing I knew, it had been replaced. So, um, that kind of attentiveness, kindness, and professionalism speaks volumes. In a world that is quick to criticize, I believe it is important to pause and give credit where it is due. So from one public servant to another, I thank you for all the big things and especially the small things that often go unnoticed. Jacksonville is in good hands, and I am proud to be a part of this community. Thank you.
Did you, ma'am?
Thank you.
Anyone else want to address the council? See no one come forward, we'll move on to the next item, the item 30, and it's time for anyone who is a candidate or wish to be a candidate on the upcoming election, this is your time to address the council if you'd like.
Good evening. Uh, my name is James Newell. I grew up in Jacksonville. It's, it's dear to me. Um, I, I have a lot of fun addressing some of the younger generations, I say, you know, about the, the name of the elementary school now is Kitty Stone Elementary, and I, I wow them by the fact that Kitty Stone was my principal when I was at Jacksonville Elementary, so I hope I'm not telling my age there. But, uh, I've been a proud resident of Jacksonville since I was four years old. Attended Jacksonville High School, graduated from there, attended Jacksonville State, got my, uh, my undergrad there, and later on, uh, got my master's degree at East Tennessee State University. I love Jacksonville, to sum it up. I am a candidate for, uh, place four, uh, place three, excuse me, uh, place three, and, I just, I just really love the area, the people. Uh, I've been out, uh, talking to quite a few folks and have learned a lot, uh, and through my 40-plus years in manufacturing, uh, specifically the quality discipline, uh, I was, uh, I was senior, uh, director for quality assurance for a company in Montgomery for years, and I learned that you listen to the people, uh, who can hold you accountable and not be afraid of that accountability. We need to, uh, be, you know, be aware of what the needs of the community are, as you all are, I know, from having had discussions with you and from knowing each one of you. But also, at the same time, we should not be afraid to say, I don't have the answer. But together, we can have those answers. We can create that. But I would propose that not only with the council, but with the citizens as a whole, that we can make Jacksonville better. As I said, I love this city. We moved away in 92 for 24 years, and there was no doubt when in 2016, we moved back, we moved back to, moved back to Jacksonville. So, uh, again, uh, I humbly seek your support, uh, for this position, and, uh, I would commit to do my very best, if elected, uh, to serve in that spot. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anyone in the audience who'd like to address the council on, uh, what possible candidate seat for one of the positions? I've been informed by our city clerk to make sure to remind you, if you are still contemplating this, that, uh, the deadline is tomorrow evening at 5:00 PM.
And we will be open until 5:00 PM.
All right, moving on to the next item, council member remarks. Anyone?
Yeah, I just want to, um, highlight the Jacksonville City School Child Nutrition Program. I know the school board is aware of that, and so, uh, kids and teens, 18 and under enjoy free meals this summer and don't get, uh, meals on-site, dining only, so stay and savor every bite with us. The free summer meals are from June 2nd to July 24th, Monday to Thursday, uh, at Kitty Stone Elementary. Breakfast is 8:00 to 8:30, lunch from 10:45 to 12:20 PM. At the Jacksonville Park Recreation, breakfast is 8:15 to 8:45, and lunch is from 11:15 to 11:45. And at the Jacksonville Boys and Girls Club, breakfast is 9:00 AM to 9:30, lunch from 12:00 to 12:30. And so, um, this is a great program. They're all, they're feeding kids, um, camp that's going on at the high school, um, just a good program, you know, some kids, you know, they don't have nothing to eat, this program right here is reaching out and touching those kids where they're actually being on, taking that burden off the parents during the summertime, so I just wanted to spotlight that, you know, there's some great things going on with the kids. Thanks, sir.
Yeah, I think, uh, since she's out here, Eastwood is having their reunion, their yearly reunion of the school on the playground and everything, uh, talking to Woody, who's in charge of it, and, uh, they usually have around 300, 500 people there, and having barbecue contests, am games. It's just people that have come back that grew up in Eastwood, and it, to them too, it's a very special place, and, uh, it's good to see all the laughter and all the happy times brought back when they grew up here, so if you're there, you want to come by, I'm sure they'll be wanting to come to reunion. It's just coming Saturday, the 28th.
Thanks, sir. There's nothing else, we'll move on to the mayor's report.
Thank you very much. Just a couple of reminders, got a big event coming up, airport, the July celebration towards August, that third, so be aware of that. You know, there'll be a lot of cousins out there, vendors, all kinds of activities for kids, uh, so, live band, uh, any kind of option, so, but that's what I mean, you're getting up in the afternoon, I don't have... But then when you're in the, you know, have a great crowd, and I think, Mark said he's got the weather phone. I got it. Also reminds you, actually also we've opened July fourth as we celebrate our country. Sam, summer, the one for June thirteenth got rained down, I think. I think they got, they got a day coming up. Purdue still have one more day, July eighteenth. However, rain, really, really good conditions.
Thanks, sir. Thank you. Anyone else want to take something for the council? Seeing no one or anything come forward, we'll move on to item thirty-four.
Consider action to adjourn into an executive session under the provisions of the Code of Alabama Section thirty-six dash twenty-five A dash seven-eight-six to discuss the consideration the governmental body is willing to offer or accept regarding the purchase, sale, exchange, lease, or market value of real property